Okay, good evening and welcome. It is December 16th. The call to order, the regularly scheduled school committee meeting. It is 6:00 PM. This meeting is being both audio and videotaped this evening. And I would ask that everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call to my left, please.
Sophia Yakubewicz, student rep.
Bill Fonseca.
Rich Fuchero.
Sarah Trilio.
Granny Thompson.
Gordon Smith, superintendent of schools.
Antonella Rochilla.
Pamela Plano, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Kathy Somwade, Department Secretary.
Okay, thank you all. We have some minutes for approval this evening. First up, November 18th.
Motion to approve the November 18th regular session meeting minutes.
Motion has been made.
Second.
And seconded discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero.
Take a motion to approve November 18th, 2019 executive session meeting minutes.
Thank you, motion made.
Second.
And seconded discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero as well. Next. Go ahead.
Move to approve the November 27th, 2019 executive session meeting minutes.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Keep rolling.
Move to approve the December 4th, 2019 executive session meeting minutes.
Motion has been made.
Second.
And seconded discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That's five to zero. And the final one.
Make a motion to approve the December 9th, 2019 executive session meeting minutes.
Motion has been made.
Second.
And seconded discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That's five to zero as well. Communications, subcommittee communications. Sophia.
Okay, so I had actually two things that I wanted to highlight. So, as you all know, we meet as the Student Advisory Committee. So at our past meeting, we discussed Model Congress. So Aiden, who is also part of the Student Advisory Committee, knew a lot about that because I think he's a member of the Model Congress.
He's a member of that.
So that's run by Mr. Phelan. And he made us aware that they submitted six final draft bills that will be presented and argued at AIC. And I can list the names of the bills. So Nuclear Energy for a Cleaner Future, License in Order to Fire and Execute with Guns Act, Assault Weapons Interdiction Act, Horse Racing Regulation Act, Community College Grant for Students, and Minor Dietary Supplement Approval. So as you can tell, there's like an array of different things that the bills are dealing with. And I thought that was just a great example of something that students are working together and actually achieving great things.
Excellent.
Because six bills is a pretty good amount. Also, we had the senior semi on December 6th. So I'm actually part of the junior class council. So we kind of used this junior semi as an opportunity to, which is usually what class councils do, is we use like the ticket sales and profits that we might make off of those as an opportunity to try and make tickets for prom less expensive. So that's kind of the end goal this year.
Yeah.
Because we want to make that as little money as possible.
Right.
So that was great. We actually had our class president, Eddie Bugabadia, he made a speech before the dance started about just how much he loves the class and how great we all are together. So it was a great night.
Did that say St. Luke's?
Yeah.
Is that St. Luke's?
Yeah, no, it was at the Elks Lodge.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, nice. Great. One question, how much longer do we have you, Sophia, coming here? Because I don't know you're in swim season.
Yeah.
So are you still going to continue coming?
Yeah, I'm going to. We usually don't have meets on...
So Grace is not going to come at this point now?
So I guess that's something we would discuss more at the Student Advisory Committee.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, Sophia.
Okay, Bill.
Last Thursday, I had a chance to partake in the judging of the senior projects. It was another great day. I mean, the group that I had did a phenomenal job. And this program has grown so much over the years, it's amazing. But it was a really good day.
Excellent. Thank you, Rich.
Two things. Very enjoyable National Society ceremony back in November, people being installed. And secondly, I'm going to second what Bill said about the senior projects. I told Mr. McQuin, who runs it, that this is the best presentations I've seen in nine years. And it seems like it's evolving and they're putting, and having students with more requirements and enforcing them to really hone in on their presentation. It was just very impressive, both the quality and presentation. Did you do it, what, Sophia?
No, I'm in the AP Lit class.
Oh, so yeah.
Yeah.
So yeah, it was just wonderful.
It is.
Excellent.
Great. Sarah.
Last week, I was attending an event through my work in Springfield, and I was able to see Heather Brown and Tim Allen and a few members of the Upper Palm Park staff at that event where Curriculum Associates was working to showcase how IREDDI can really be a partner in the multi-tiered systems of support that DESI is supporting. So it was really nice to see representation from Eastside Meadow there and to be able to talk to Heather and Tim and some of the faculty as well. And a lot of great information was dispersed. And then I was able to, kind of by chance, to stop in on the PD day over at Meadowbrook. So I was able to see some of the work around ST math that educators were getting, some professional development around, a little bit of the work around the phonics pilot, and then the paraprofessional PD that was happening. So it was a really nice opportunity to check in on the school that I partnered with. So that was great.
Excellent. It's Noah.
Nothing right now.
Okay. How come nobody brought the MSBA up? I thought that was...
You'll cheer.
Oh, cheer.
It's all yours.
Thank you, all yours.
It's all yours.
So with that, proud to announce after several years of trying, we've been invited into the Massachusetts School Building Authority Core Project...
College.
...of the building process. Thank you. And that means we begin starting to talk about what to do with this building, the high school. Lots of work to come, many votes, discussions with the town, certainly more information to come. But it's good news, at least from the state side, that the potential is there for an ask to now receive some grant money for a new building. So happy for all the hard work that everybody's done.
Yes, it was very much a group effort, so thank you.
Yeah. Been a tough road, but we're there. Yeah. Been a long road.
It will still be, but just letting everyone...
Long road to go.
It takes a long...
And in the end, again, it's still up to the voters of this town. So a lot of work to still be done. But the next step, we've got there. So thank you all for your help on that.
Well said.
Okay. With that, we have an opportunity for visitors to address the committee.
Oh, um...
Are you interested?
You don't have to.
You don't have to address the committee.
I just want to be smart.
You don't have to. Thanks for coming, though.
Yep.
And next, we move on to the FY20 first quarter financial report.
All right, so in your packet, you'll see that I have the FY20 quarterly financial statement. This is as of September 30th. So it is a spreadsheet designed as a financial update for your FY20 school budget. Just a reminder, it is for the first quarter, which is September 30th. And the report also includes your grants and your revolving accounts. If you go right to page four, so what I've done on page two and three is I always give you a little blurb on the different type of accounts, just to remind you and for the school committee members. If you go to page four at the top, so this sheet here is our operating budget, and at the top are our salary accounts. You will see that everything, you know, is looking very, very good. I'd like to remind everyone that 83% of our $31 million budget is for the salary side of the budget, which is $25.8 million. Again, this is as of September 30th, so you'll see most of the accounts have been encumbered. We do try to encumber as many of the salary accounts as we can. On the bottom section of the sheet, you'll see the expense accounts, which again is about 17% of our $31 million budget. So that's about $5.3 million. I do want to just bring to your attention that there are two accounts. There are the special ed out of district accounts that have a slight deficit right now and that will be covered with circuit breaker funding. Again, this is as of September 30th, so I need to portray things as they were at that point in time. Do we have any questions on the operating budget at all?
Operating budget?
You know, this first page here.
Yeah, so we don't encumber department head stipends or anything?
No, those come like twice, yes, exactly, twice a year, you know, because overtime, obviously, there's...
Substitutes.
Yeah, substitutes.
Substitutes, yeah, that makes sense.
Yep, tutors, athletics, the coaches, those kind of things cannot be...
Right, okay.
Okay. So page five is going to be your grants and your revolving accounts. On the top section is your grants. If you recall, back in early September, you approved all of these grants for FY20, so those shouldn't be anything, you know, surprising to you at all there. You'll see that we have the amount expended and then the funds encumbered and the balances remaining there. I do want you to know that, you know, I construct a monthly analysis and I draw down funds monthly on most of these grants, like Title I, II, Title IV, the IDEA grant, Medco grant, the special ed early childhood, all of those, I have to do an analysis. And we can't draw down funds until we've actually expended the funds first, so just to let you know. But all is in good standing there, and I think we're right on target. I work with, you know, whoever's in charge of the grants, such as, you know, Heather Brown for Title I, II, and IV, and Dr. Welch, thank you, for the IDEA grant. So we're always looking at those grants. On the bottom section are your revolving accounts. Those are to carry forward in the first column, so as of June 30th, this is what was rolled into the FY20 budget. And just as a reminder, all of these accounts, you know, help us with our whole budgeting process. If we didn't have all of these, along with all of the grants, we would be asking for a lot more, you know, funds during the budget process.
Were the stadium rental, the athletic stadium rental, that $65.70, that was over the summer, those must, is that camps or something? It seems like a lot...
The athletic stadium, $65.70.
We do have camps rented out in the summer.
During the summer, yeah, I can give you the detail. I mean, I can look that up.
No, I just, yeah, just because it's only September of a school year, but it's actually the summer as well, so...
That's true, yep.
Ms. Belia, the athletic revolving is not showing the triple E loss of money for the gate rentals at this time.
That's correct. So that was, what months were the, was that?
I believe that's...
I think that ended October.
In October.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, so some of that might not have been reflected in here.
So we'll see that on the next one, okay.
It always takes a little bit of time for the posting behind the scenes from the town side. So sometimes revenues are up and expenses down, but the next month, it could flip by the time, so...
And that's going to be something that we're going to have to take into account for our budgeting for next year, because the triple E threat is not necessarily going away.
Right.
Yeah, we seem to be in that area that is...
Or is it?
Or is it?
Like the swine flu went away, right?
Oh.
Well, according to...
Yeah, but... I work for CDC.
No, but you're talking with the health department.
Right, and actually, the State Department of Public Health, they basically are recommending that school systems and recreation departments start putting into their plans for next year the possibility that we will be at this threat level again.
How many, that's going to be kind of difficult to do, isn't it? I mean, you're going to...
It just means that you're scheduling differently.
That's what I mean.
We'll change, we'll modify the schedule if it comes around, right? We're not going to plan that yet.
No, I think they want us to plan now.
You have to plan for the threat level.
But we modify.
You can modify, but be ready to modify faster where, so that we're not...
I would prefer to do that. I don't want to change how we...
I agree.
No, we can't.
And I think that's the mindset.
Lock our kids inside.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, unnecessarily.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
We're not looking to...
All right.
The only other thing I want to bring to your attention is the circuit breaker funding. As you can see, we just rolled over $10,000. The FY19 fourth quarter payment, which was $236,000, didn't come in until July 2nd, so that's not reflected there, so it's really like a $246,000.
And that's from the state.
That's correct.
How come they didn't give it to us on September 30th?
They didn't pass the budget.
They just...
They didn't pass the budget till the end of June, or the end of July, right?
But that was the fourth quarter payment.
That was the FY19 fourth quarter.
It was the fourth quarter payment?
From the state, yeah.
So our FY20...
Do you understand how it works, though? I just don't, I know.
I know, it gets a little frustrating. It is what it is.
Yeah.
It's kind of how I've come to...
Well, they can do it when we can.
The good news is, though, I do want to say that during the budget process, I always stay very conservative. And with circuit breaker, I planned on about a 68% reimbursement. And it is coming in. I have my nice form here.
75%.
75%, so it's approximately $100,000 more. So as you can see, because these numbers are really low compared to what we typically roll over, so I am cautiously optimistic that we will be okay here with our special ed accounts. Please know that I am analyzing them, working with Dr. Welch, and at the next quarter, I will certainly be able to have a better, you know, information, I guess, on it to feel more confident going forward. But right now, this is just, this is September 30th, so it's the beginning of the year. So...
Did we purchase for a school lunch account? Have we made all those purchases in the...
Not all of them.
Not all?
No, no.
Some of them have been?
Some of them have. Some of the smaller ones, there were some larger ones that haven't, mostly because she's still trying to work with DPW. There's like a big freezer, which can be pretty pricey. And I know this is a higher balance, I just want to remind everyone that Lori Paul does need to leave. I forget the percentage, but it's about $240,000 sitting in the account as just a cushion in case anything were to happen, because things can go wrong so quickly. So, you know, she runs a really good program, she's got great staff. We're doing very well, and it's a healthy program.
No, and I...
And anytime, she said she would come in to talk to you about the program, too, if there's questions you have. And I can get that list again and get an update from her.
Yeah, just to see where we're at with that. I know we had to go up on price of school lunch, not because we wanted to, well, because it was imposed on us.
Right, exactly, there's certain rules.
And so, just so that balance doesn't get out of control. I know we're going to make some investments, but it's relatively high balance, like, as you said, but I know we're going to make some purchases.
That's right.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that?
No.
Did I probably take a motion on accepting?
I'll make a motion to approve the FY20 first quarter financial report as presented by our Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Okay, thank you. Motion has been made.
Second.
And seconded discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Done, done.
You clearly have it.
Got to step on it. All right, we have discussion on next year's calendar. This is a topic that has come up before and is coming back again.
So in your informational packet, you had, we had sent out two surveys, one that was to staff, that is in the pie chart, the results there, and then one that was sent out to ELPS families through Blackboard Connect, and also a area on the webpage that they're directed, people were directed to within that message. And as you can see, it's looking at that first week of school. That was the area of the calendar that we wanted to get some feedback on. And there were three options. The current way we're scheduling that first week of school, where your convocation is on Monday, and then students come to school Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then Friday has been a day off for students and staff. And the second option was to run convocation on that Monday. Students come to school Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then have the Labor Day three-day weekend. And then the final option was a revised schedule where nothing is scheduled on that Monday, but we do the convocation on Tuesday, and then students come to school starting on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, going to the three-day holiday weekend. As you can see, staff overwhelmingly voted 87.6% for the current type of schedule we're running. And then families, we had 744 families respond. Approximately 50.67% or 377 of those families liked the way the current schedule is going. 32%, 32.1% or 239 of those families were interested in that second option, where we start on Monday and have the four-day week for students. And then 17.2%, roughly 128 responses. Looked at that third option, which was sort of a compromise where you're shifting it Monday, no events, then Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, you have your convocation, and then students coming back. The two sample schedules or calendars, you've seen these before. One has next year set up with that Friday being a day off, and draft two has convocation and then a four-day week for students.
Come on, Antonella. What do you have?
I mean, look at what's happening right now. We're already on our, I don't know, Eastland, we don't have a snow day tomorrow, but I do think they already had a delay, too, didn't?
We have that in the delay.
So...
Two snow days.
Two snow days and a delay.
Two snow days and a delay.
So...
Three snow days.
Right, I wonder if you put that in the question, that this will also push the days in the summer, the later you go, and start with not four.
It's not even that. It's, you're missing all these days of instruction.
Right. Early on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So when assessments come, early March, mid-March, I mean, it's...
One of the hopes that I hope the commissioner can do, and he seems to at least be thinking about it, is he talks about shortening that window of assessments. And that would be fantastic if they could really get that done. Because it does take, say, take a middle school, almost, the entire building's testing.
Right.
So it takes over during those weeks of assessment.
So that day is better served, Antonella, you're saying, early instead of at the end of the school year, which is what we would do if we put it on the Friday of the extra day. It's one more day early on.
Right, yes. Yeah. I think it's great we have as much participation in the surveys.
Yeah, that was actually very much appreciated.
Appreciate that you took the time to do that, Gordon. That's really, that's helpful information.
I think it is, too. And I think even though the parent survey is showing that 50% are in favor, that also means 50% are also questioning the current structure in one way or another that we have.
Yes.
So while the staff is definitely more on board with the current structure, I think it does show some interest on the behalf of families and to kind of think about our calendar and possibly some different ways based on, based on maybe some of their needs as well and their thoughts about how the school year should unfold for the students. And we still have half-days after this.
I like the way the school year starts.
And I'm the same way, so. I appreciate the survey. I think the survey did point out, you know, there is some, to Sarah's point, yeah, there is some thought out there, but at this point, you know, we're into this one. I'm kind of like staying where I am. I respect everybody's opinion, believe me, because I get it, I understand. I'm just not sure how much more is going to get accomplished on the Friday of that first week. That's my concern, being the first week of school. And again, to the weather issues, we can't predict the weather. We don't know what the heck's going to happen. This is, you know, this is kind of like a hiccup in what's happened in the past five or six years, where we're potentially into our third snow day and it's December.
Right.
I mean, does it all shut off, or is it going to be one of those nightmare years like we had a couple of years ago, where we were starting to take days from the April vacation because we felt the night?
Yeah.
We typically have lower, I'm just saying, we did a survey, you know, not a survey, but...
Over my tenure, I think it's two-point-something snow days per year.
Yeah, it is slower than...
I mean, it's, obviously, every year is unique.
I know, it's...
When we had the October 2011 storm, which knocked us out for five straight days. The interesting thing was, and so I give the school committee a lot of credit, is I definitely was thinking, oh my gosh, we have to think about taking back days on vacation, blah, blah, blah. But we waited, and ultimately, that, the rest of that winter was mild enough that we didn't have to take back vacations and so forth. So you never know. You're absolutely right, you know.
Yeah.
Obviously, we're hearing weather reports tonight.
Time is...
So that's on our minds.
Very timely.
Hoping January is a very calm month.
Well, January can be calm, but it's February. February and March, where we seem to get hammered again.
I know.
So...
The other part of the discussion, I know we spoke about briefly, I think, last time, was setting the precedent about having that Friday, and if we were to look to add a professional development day into the calendar in the future, it would behoove us, I think, to have that Friday already in our calendar so that we don't have to negotiate that and potentially, not that it's by contract.
Well, you don't have to...
I know, I understand that, but to say we want to do this and this in the same year could be a steeper hill to climb than, yeah, than not. So I am looking at that Friday now more as it's moderately arbitrary to have taken that day off. I know it's nice to have, if you're going away especially, or things of that nature, but I've seen the point in the usefulness of that day, so I might be in favor of draft Any other discussion?
After this, though, we still have to work on the half-days, correct? That's the second layer of this work?
Yeah, so generally, what we do is we'll go back to the collaborative committee, we'll try to plot the half-days, and then also have the leadership team look at it and then bring it back here.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. All right.
Who'd like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve draft one for the 2020-2021 school year, which is essentially limits the start and ending that we have now.
Okay, a motion on the floor.
Second.
And seconded, further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Nay. That does not pass, two to three. Do I have another motion?
I move to approve the Eastside Meadow Public Schools' school calendar 2020-2021, draft two, which would include students and faculty working on September 4th.
Okay, motion has been made.
Second.
And seconded. Discussion. Hearing non-holds, please, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay.
Nay.
That carries three to two. Okay, thank you. Live the discussion.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have a request from the EL rec department for use of ELHS on Sunday, January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty, from six AM to six PM for a wrestling tournament.
So this is a, um, a new request. I don't know that, um, rec department has done youth tournaments before, but they are trying to coordinate.
I remember wrestling.
Yeah, I don't think we've done, uh, they are, there are youth tournaments like this. Uh, I know Ludlow used to do quite a few of them when I was, um, principal at, at the high school there. Um, and I think our coach at the high school, along with the rec department, are trying to promote, obviously, wrestling and youth wrestling and so forth. And they would like to host a tournament here at the high school on January twenty-sixth. Um, the length, that is a Sunday, the length is, um, six AM to six PM, which would require a waiver vote of our use of building on Sundays.
Is that actual policy that we have?
Yeah, we do have.
Okay.
It's in our facilities use policy. That, I think the reasoning behind that generally is for outdoor activities, given that, uh, the noise and our, um, position next to, um, St. Michael's.
I think also though, it's, it's.
To recognize.
To give families just a little bit of time.
Absolutely.
Something to get over there.
Yeah, you are correct.
So, yeah, I, I really, go ahead, please.
So anyway, uh, wrestling tournaments of this sort happening one day, they do do this twelve-hour because they have to not only set up, but then they have to do all the weigh-ins and then obviously the wrestling matches themselves start.
I like the fact that it's being named after Robert Masorello. That's really neat.
Very nice.
So if you don't mind, I'd like to make a motion to, um, approve the, um, wrestling tournament named, named for Robert Masorello, uh, from six AM to six PM on January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty.
Motion has been made.
Second.
And seconded. Further discussion. I, just worth noting, you'll see it was dated eleven nineteen, the request. I, I was made aware of the request and, um, I thought it would pass, so we kind of gave it, because we wouldn't meet again until.
Oh, you have to, you got to plan it out.
So we, without saying that it would pass, we did have a conversation about it earlier, just so everybody knows. But to the other side of it, I'm, I'm, I'm wary that we don't set a precedent that we start allowing everything on Sundays. So I definitely should revisit that policy or.
We could.
I think the whole point was to not have things on Sundays and we're starting to do more things on Sundays. So I don't.
Well, it's, I, I hear what you're saying, but I don't, I'm not sure what else. I know that the lacrosse tournament comes up.
Yeah, it feels like the third one though this year.
Our Razor Hope maybe?
Yeah.
Razor Hope, lacrosse tournament, and this is the third.
Yeah. So let's maybe, I don't know, the policy subcommittee, when they meet next time, take another look at it. Sure, we'll do that. And then.
Yeah, you are.
I do think it's great though, considering a couple of weeks ago, we did have to pass a waiver for wrestling. So it's nice to see because of the numbers.
They didn't get any credit, so they didn't get more numbers out.
Yeah, but that's great to see like there's some more support from the rec department too to help get kids interested in, in youth wrestling. So that's awesome.
Great. Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor. It has been seconded. Um, calls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. That carries five to zero. Okay, we have a request to waive policy GCCA dash R for long-term sub at Maple Shade for a speech and language pathologist.
So one of our speech and language pathologists is, um, going out on leave. We have advertised, uh, for a long-term sub. Um, we actually received three licensed applicants, which was fantastic. Um, however, all three declined, uh, the offer when they learned that they were going to go thirty days in accordance with the policy at eighty-five dollars a day.
And that's not in the posting per se, right?
Not in, no, it's, it's something to, um, you know, competitive wages. Um, so this is, um, Dr. Welch, uh, giving you just some information in terms of, um, what they've done so far and what they would like to do. They're asking for that waiver and start the individual at, um, the bachelor's one level, which they would go to as of the thirty-first day. Um, the challenge, uh, as you go through some of these bullet points, we could reach out to an agency. Yes, that might be more, um, cost efficient. There's no guarantee though that an agency will be able to provide, um, uh, the consistent person, um, because we would like to have one person as opposed to somewhat of a revolving door. Uh, the other piece is that you lose, uh, some ability to select and bring in a person that you've interviewed. You, you get to interview people, but, uh, you lose some of your ability to select.
In my history with outsourcing with this type of position, it's always substantially more. I'm just saying.
Yes, yeah, because of the scarcity, I'm sure.
I mean, this makes sense because we're dealing with schools at IEPs, my.
Right.
Yeah, so I mean.
Which is that last bullet point in terms of compensatory services.
What do we typically pay after the thirty days? What's that rate?
That's, that's to.
So day one to thirty, it's the eighty-five dollars per day. And then the day thirty-one, it's the bachelor's one from there to the end of the placement.